Free Year Woman, my name is Alfred Fray with JG Consulting. We're here with AAF's community to do a little town hall and feedback from the folks here in the audience and online as well. We're working at building a profile. I've known Mr. Chambers for years and I know he did a good job here, but he decided to retire. That's why we're doing this search, if those of you who are interested. What we're trying to do is, we have four basic questions that will be asked you tonight. We ask you to respond and share the time. We'll have a lot of folks online, I'm sure, to share the time. We're not here to solve the problems, we're here to hire someone to solve the problems. And when we ask certain questions, the feedback about aspirations and characteristics, things like that, it's not a condemnation necessarily or judgment of what's current, it's an aspiration to have it going forward as well. So this is not an evaluation of any thought at all. It was about me, I'm a long-term educator, retired 2016. I get teaching school over in Baytown, Texas, that's my career. I moved there from my hometown of Macaulge just up in East Texas. I'm especially excused in there because administration in Baytown, administration in Spring Branch, Texas, I was there for 12 years up to Assistant Superintendent in Spring Branch, Texas. I was from there to State Ohio Superintendent, a job that I couldn't really apply for, but I got hired anyway. Was there for a few years and moved back to Texas to DeSoto IAS superintendent. Was there a couple of years and moved to Katy IAS superintendent, was there for nine years, that's where I retired from. After 18 months of retirement, I got a phone call from a family friend from Macaulge, it's my hometown. He just said, "Could you use your help for a few months while we do some good search?" That few months turned into two years. And I decided after two years, it is time to do something else. And so I moved out to Fallsure. Wife and I were having a great time at my failure term, miserably, but not miserably, but fairly breakable. So, tonight, I think they put the questions out there in advance already. My colleague Dr. Hannah Olson will be coming in in a little bit, he's came from Dallas, performed Dallas Superintendent, we'll be able to come in as well. So, we're trying to find the best possible superintendent to come to AAF IAS. AAF is important to me, it's in my backyard. It's a very innovative district, it has so many wonderful things going on, I just go to the teachers all the time. We will become the biggest advocate for AAF IAS to do the search process. So we're trying to gather feedback from you guys that will help us sell the district. Because anyone worth having probably has a good job already. So how do we get them to come to leave where they are, to come here? I think there's a lot to say, I think there's a lot to say, a strong case for me, so we'll work with you tonight. I think we had two of these already, I believe. We have tonight, I believe we have one coming up Saturday at 1:00, is that correct? And it ended up on Thursday tomorrow night, Thursday night.
Saturday at 1:00.
And on the Thursday at 1:00, okay.
And Saturday at, Thursday at 12:00, Saturday at 1:00.
Thursday at 12:00, Saturday at 1:00. 12:00 Thursday is here?
Yes.
1:00 Saturday is District Headquarters?
Yes.
Just, all right? Actually, we'll see you all again on Saturday as well, in our book. All right, so the first question I'd like to begin with, and any audience just giving the shout out and I'll repeat it on the tip of the line, Paul and Jericho, anyone who is helping with, is, "What are your hopes and aspirations for AAF IAS?" Going forward, next year, future years, what are your hopes and aspirations for AAF IAS? I'll wait until we stand and go home. Hopes and aspirations, that's the first question. Can we read a few things off the chat? Bring home a man.
Greetings, Dame of War on AAF IAS, parent and taxpayer and alumnus. First of all, I want to thank you for listening to our concerns and hosting the meeting, town hall meeting on Saturday, August 20th. That may be as unfortunate as it could be, the administration built, so thank you for making those adjustments. I do have a question on the August 8th meeting. The gentleman stated that you all are going to be meeting with the school board on August 23rd to provide them the feedback that you receive from us. I looked on the website, I saw the Saturday meeting on the board's calendar, I don't see the August 23rd meeting on there, what time is that, is that open to the public?
I don't know what time it is, but it will be posted. If there's some chance.
They think the board meeting is scheduled for August 30th.
August 30th.
No, they mentioned that they were going to be presenting to the board on August 23rd.
Yeah, I have that here too, on my calendar, it should be August 23rd. So it's got to be posted, at least three days in advance, so I don't have that posted. And I don't know if all will be in public or session, I don't know yet, but that should happen.
All right, so can you repeat your question for me again, please?
What are your hopes and aspirations?
All right, hopes and aspirations. Last year, Superintendent Chambers stated that he and his administration had not been monitoring data because they had been focused on graduation rates. And subsequently, we have 33% of our elementary schools are in TEA improvement required status. So my hopes and aspirations would be that we would have a superintendent, whether he or she, it could be he or she, come to our district and immediately focus on data as opposed to graduation rates, and try to turn those IR schools around before they get taken over by TEA. Thank you.
Excellent point, because a lot of the data becomes information to help improve graduation rate. So let's, again, look at where you're going, so thank you for that feedback, we appreciate that. Any other thoughts? Question number two, if we can go back and forth as we need to, if thoughts come to you, all right? So question two, what are some things you're most proud of, for AAF IAS, what are some celebrations? Now, I can give you a few. I want to hear from you guys tonight, and y'all should go through online. What are some celebrations for AAF IAS? Apologies for my voice, I've been outside working in my daughter's yard, my yard, and AAF has got me, so my voice is kind of, it's not my very bright voice tonight. What's some celebrations? What you're doing with your pre-case services outstanding. You've always had some leadership special government around you. There's a number of community folks who truly do care for and work hard for AAF IAS. Definitely call this staff. Definitely call this staff. Any other celebrations? Any other celebrations?
Greetings, once again, Dame of War on AAF IAS, parent and taxpayer and alumnus. I think AAF does a good job, the community does a good job of celebrating being alumnus. The district does a good job of recognizing that we are proud of our community and proud of our district and tapping into our resilience of being AAF proud, so I think they're doing a good job of that. And the community does a good job of representing, being proud for the people.
Awesome, thank you, sir. Welcome back to my community in Fallsure. The reception works, is the group there all right? Thanks for making it in, sir.
My apologies for being late, but no excuses, but thank you very much. My name is Michael Leon Hossa. I've just recently retired as a superintendent of Dallas. I've been superintendent for 27 years, including Spring Texas, where I was superintendent in Spring, so I'm very familiar with the Houston area and been a superintendent in Texas most of my career. AAF has a great reputation, as I've been working with your superintendent and your board members and have known of you for many, many, many years. So my apologies again, and I'll turn it back over and I'll facilitate here in just a second.
Thank you, sir. And we've opened question number two, and we have one and two on the table. Anything from the chat yet, or are we still working?
I'll also, I'll piggyback off something that he said, which is, oh, okay. He said I can shut off, but...
I'll repeat it, you're welcome.
Just to piggyback off something that he said, at least when I was in the district, the communications department was great about also celebrating student accomplishments and staff accomplishments, which is not something that happens in other places, so...
Awesome. I think a lot of folks who aren't from AAF don't truly appreciate the pride that is here. Having known previous superintendents, before Mr. Chambers, and known Mr. Chambers as well, and also the board members over time, there's a tremendous community pride here. And you have some tremendous alumnus in AAF, you're saying there, and I think it's important to recognize and celebrate, because there are many superintendents here, and they've got to come here and appreciate what's here. And we don't talk about coming here to change anything, it's looking at the aspirations, which is our vision, our hopes, our future. And who must we be, who must we become to make that happen, make that happen? So it's important. All right? So, question number three on the table, all right? We're good?
Even as successful as we have become over time, there are many challenges, and especially the challenges that occurred in the last two years. We want to know what is, what are issues that are challenges or obstacles that need to be overcome by whoever the new leadership is, whether they come from inside the district or they come from outside the district? So what are the things that they're going to, the new superintendent, working with the board, is going to have to tackle first? And if we don't know what they are, we can't help you find the best superintendent possible. So we want you to be professional, but we also want you to be direct and honest about what are some challenges that need to be overcome as we go out and try to find the best superintendent in the country? Who wants to step up and give us the first challenge? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Greetings, Dame of War on AAF IAS, parent and taxpayer and alumnus. I've heard a couple of statements out of you all that's very concerning. First one is, you're not trying to make any changes. So me as a parent, I'm here, I'm looking for changes. So if you're not trying to make any changes, I've already shut down, you knocked right in front of us, because we don't want the same thing that we, I personally don't want the same thing that I've had. That's why I started with the data with Superintendent Chambers. So if another superintendent comes in now looking at data, I don't want that again. Some of the challenges is, I started off by saying 33% of our elementary schools are in IR, right? That's higher than the percentage of HISD. So I want a school district that's going to be transparent. I don't know how much you're paying PR for the news channels, but if HISD steps on the cricket in the dark, they make the news. AAF IAS for some reason never makes news, and that's not being transparent. You stated that you wanted us to be transparent. So our district does a good job of blurring on good things, but they hide the bad things. So it's kind of like having cancer, you hide, and you hide, and you hide, and you finally go to the doctors at the last minute, and then they got to tell you something, or you're dying. Our district hides information from us, our leadership hides information from us. We don't need that anymore. We need to know the good and the bad so that we can address it and/or help change it. We can't change something that we don't know about, and then Superintendent Chambers leaves, and all of a sudden our schools get taken over by IR, and it looks like new superintendent failed our community, and they get it. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you for your professionalism and for your directness, that's what we want. This entire process is driven by the data, and you gave us some data points that the new superintendent is going to have to deal with. And so thank you for being direct. I'll let Mr. Fray to talk about change. Change is going to happen just because of a new leadership. But there are, what you don't want is for people not to at least listen to see what has been working, so that's what I don't really want to try to play into.
I do, and I really appreciate that as well. When I talk about, not talk about change, but about becoming, it's still growth, it's still doing things differently. Because we need to articulate what our aspirations are, and then we shift what we're doing down, if it's not getting us there, to the things that get us there. I don't walk in saying change, because change is a rejection of everything before. There are a lot of folks that there's an interest in it. So let's respect what they've been trying, but let's also push them with aspirations to articulate, they will become aspirations. And so that represents movement and growth, versus just saying change. Because we say change all the time, but we don't have the same meaning behind it though. We don't mean the same thing. When we talk about an aspiration, and we analyze the discrepancy between our aspirations and current reality, we move from current reality to what must be for the aspiration. So, is it change? Is it semantics? Kind of semantics, but I think it's a little soft, it's an easier sale when folks have ownership and the aspiration, and then the behaviors that need to get for the aspiration takes place. And so that is where you move and you grow, that's what I mean by that.
Let me also add, based upon your comment, the person who we need to find to be your superintendent needs to have some academic or instructional prowess, because according to the data that you laid out, that is going to be an issue, that someone has to be ready to deal with. So thank you. Somebody else, another challenge or barrier that needs to be overcome? Please, come on up here, thank you.
I'll just go ahead and state the obvious. We know that teacher retention and teacher recruiting is a problem across the state. It's not unique to AAF at all, but perhaps somebody who's willing to look at, you know, how is AAF doing compared with other districts? Why are people choosing to come to AAF versus choosing to leave AAF? Those might be some things that a new superintendent might consider when trying to keep people, because, you know, we know that's going to be an issue. And that gets into affecting the data and campus improvement and that sort of stuff.
Thank you for bringing it up, it is the obvious, we've had the great resignation. And in fact, AAF is not the only school district that's looking for a superintendent. Out of the 77 largest school districts, only 25 of them, the largest, most urban school district, only 25 of them have had their superintendent in place since 2020. That's just the superintendent. And you talk about the teachers, who are really the ones on the ground with the students. And there's been the great resignation. And you're right, it's not just an AAF situation, but it is going to take some resolve and some creativity to solve that. And one of the things that in my career I've learned is that it's not just going to be money. People will go for the money, but they won't stay if there's not a culture or an environment that they feel are being treated. So, instruction, personnel, specifically with replacement of positions, those are two big rocks that the new superintendent is going to have to tackle. Thank you for that question, or feedback. Others? Are we hitting someone live? Yeah, the question that came online, are candidates being considered yet? It's very preliminary in the process, and we don't want to be presumptuous that we know what you're looking for. Part of it is these first four, five weeks, and I will be back Saturday to get some more feedback, is trying to determine the characteristics that you're looking for in a superintendent. And then there's also a myth about the timing of searches. Searches happen when searches happen, and luckily, the district has an interim who is familiar with the district. So I'm not concerned about the timing. In fact, as a new superintendent coming in, I'd like to have the spring to be able to plan, budget, staff, and those things. It's a myth that the new superintendent has to start at the start of the school year. There's never a good time anymore in public education about when you start. So right now, we're just gathering information about what is necessary, we're pushing two very specific things here tonight, then we'll start putting together a profile. The board will actually consider the profile next week. A presentation by our firm will be made to the board about what we heard both in person and online. Now then after that, is where the recruitment starts, because we've got to know what we're looking for before we go out there. And so then the recruitment will happen for several weeks, and we're very optimistic that we can get people in front of the board in October for consideration. So, but thank you for that question, thanks for speaking up.
We have a question.
Sure, please.
Question is, how will district strategic plan factor into the search?
Strategic plan is always important, because you need to study where you are right now. New data will inform what needs to be adjusted in the strategic plan. But the strategic plan is something that was developed in concert with the board, the staff, the community, and the superintendent. But every strategic plan needs to be updated based upon new data. I would argue then that very importantly is the concept of strategic thinking. Five-year plan is way out there. Strategic thinking is defined as 18 months, what's going to be important in the next 18 months, and then you realize what needs to be changed in your strategic plan. So the strategic plan is a guide, but none of us knew what happened, none of us five years ago knew what was going to happen with a pandemic, or all these other things that teachers have been facing. So you have to be able to pivot. It's good to have a plan, but you need to regularly look at it. So I'm sure whenever the board and superintendent work together reviewing the plan, the strategic plan will be the guiding post. But now you put out, both of you, who have spoken up and put out new data, that has to be considered in revision of the strategic plan. Somebody else want to add a question? Yes, sir, come on back up.
Greetings, Dame of War on AAF IAS, parent and taxpayer and alumnus. I want to add to the growth too, the thing that the district does well, they do a great job of recruiting teachers and staff, et cetera. What they do not do a great job is retention. So, based on the data that's presented, educators don't feel supported, and then they're not receiving the promotion that they feel that they should, they get passed over by proportion. So that's something that another superintendent is going to have to worry about. We talked about the strategic plan, which goes back to data. The district does a great job of collecting data, but they do a horrible job of making adjustments to those data, it's like the analogy, the gentleman, first gentleman here that came on Tuesday said he likes football. So your quarterback goes up to the line, he sees it's a blitz, but he runs the exact same play that you called in a huddle, and he doesn't make an audible, that it does us no good, can't win like that. So if you're not monitoring data and you're just collecting data, you're not making any adjustments for it, it's useless, and that's why we continue to go in the direction that we have, because we're one, not monitoring data, and then two, once we do obtain that information, we're not making any adjustments at the line. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments again, a professional matter, but yes, we all have to pivot all the time. And it's, but a plan does put you in the right direction. Now we prefer to be specific instances that some new superintendent is going to deal with. Achievement, the great resignation, and then when we do hire them, because they do, thank you for the commitment, for giving them credit, for hiring teachers, but then now you got to keep them. And so that's three, that data points. Anybody else want to have anything to offer about the challenges and opportunities they're going to face the new administration? Yes, please, come forward.
I'm just concerned about, you know, how school will be protected, you know, we've had seen so many things happen to other schools. Sorry. Thank you. Yes, I'm just concerned about the security in the schools, you know, it's one thing that we'll be concerned about same to every time. So that's one of the issues that I'm really concerned about, you know, the security of children, of course, you know, the teachers, we appreciate their work, you know, how hard they work for to give to children, you know, the way they are. But I mean, that's one of the things I'm really concerned about, the security in the schools.
Thank you for the question and the comment, and there's something that weighs on everybody's mind constantly. Being a superintendent for 27 years, every day at 4:45, I will look at my watch, make sure all the muscles are gone and all the children are safe. It is a big worry, and it's going to have a high profile. It's going to have a very high profile over the next few months. When the legislature comes back in session, there are going to be products and services that are going to be given to school districts and money. But every community is unique, and AAF is a very urban environment, and you have to know your community. Many districts have done many things to try to increase the safety, and now what happened in Texas, in Waddell, is just unforgivable. And that is a parent's biggest worry about the safety of students, and it's going to be talked about everywhere. And the legislature is going to come up with issues, and so the new superintendent will obviously need to be able to say, okay, this is what the state is coming up with, here's what they're offering, how is that going to work in AAF and in our community? And being a superintendent for a long time, we had old buildings, we had one high school had 37 entrances, and you had portable buildings. And so there's not going to be a linear, safe answer. This is very complex, and everybody is upset about it. So that is going to occupy the minds of the board and superintendent, I promise you, this spring, as they're getting new resources, and how do you best apply them in your community? That's a very good point. Any other questions?
We have a question on the selection process after the town hall, what goes into hiring a superintendent?
Yes, what goes into is, this process is called recruitment and selection. So, we know what we're going to be looking for, thank you for the question, it's a very astute question. By next week, we'll know specifically what we're going to be looking for. Those of us that have been around, then we know a lot of people, and people will have, anybody will have the opportunity to apply. And so we will take applications, but some people have good jobs, they're not going to apply. So that'll be our job to go out and recruit the best candidates that we think meet that profile and convince them to apply for this job. We're going to tell them the truth, the good, the bad, and the ugly, as you pointed out earlier, about what they're going to be facing. Because you don't want someone to come in here not aware, but I promise you, superintendent do the homework. Now, everything is available, they'll watch every board meeting, they'll look at the data, the data you pointed out, they'll look at the audit reports, so they'll have a sense. But then there has to be a good match. And so what the firm will do is we will present to the board all of the candidates who apply. But with our experience, we will recommend that they interview, depending on what the board wants, that they will probably present to them 12 names. And we always bring a diverse set of names to the board to consider. Then the board typically would pick a smaller number than that, five to six, that they would then want to have a conversation with, multiple times. We let them look at the entire stack, because if there's someone that applied that we didn't recommend, the board still has that opportunity to look at others who may have applied that we didn't feel met the profile and roles of the occasion. But in the end, this is the board's job, this is not our job. Our job is to go recruit and select and bring people in here, and ultimately, it's the board's decision as to who becomes the next superintendent. I can tell you though, despite the challenges that you're pointing out there in this session, this is an attractive job. They've had three superintendents in 40 years, nowhere else in America is that possible. So people that are going to want some, that want some stability, be able to execute, the board has a good reputation, and that's not true of all boards. So this is going to, so that's kind of how the process will work, and in the end, we're going to advise the board to make sure it's a good match, because just because you're a good superintendent in one community doesn't mean you're a good superintendent in another community. And there'll be a lot of vetting of the candidates that get in front of the board, and they actually have to do even the process that we use, JG, is they do video, a five-minute video interview, as they're considering who as they're considering who to bring in for a personal interview. And then we do some other checks on their personality, styles, et cetera. So this is a very rigorous, elaborate process about how we get the right people in front of the school board. But the bottom line, and we're very confident we can land this job by October. And then depends on their sitting superintendent. They got to get released from their previous job. And the interim is available until the winter break. So that gives time for all of this to work. And then the new superintendent could be here in the spring to do the budget, staffing, et cetera. Alton, I'll turn it back to you. If you want to add those who have questions.
Yeah, let me go ahead and give you the schedule right now, just for the record. We began this process interviewing the board members individually July eighteenth through July twentieth. And we're doing community engagement now through this Saturday, which is the twentieth, I believe. And the board will review the profile information on the twenty-third. And will, should they approve what we give them. And once they kind of massage it a little bit, then we'll look at using that data, that information to post the position and open applications August twenty-fourth. Applicants roll open August twenty-fourth through September twenty-seventh is the scheduled date. And the board will review the candidates on October fourth. Decide who they want to bring in. We'll have time between the twenty-seventh of September and October third to identify the ones they want to bring in. And they'll meet on the fourth of October to make that decision as a board. They'll have round one of interviews, October tenth through twelfth. And final round interviews, October twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth. And they intend to name the long final list on October twenty-seventh. And that's when they're waiting to figure out if they can offer a contract. So it'll be, JG pointed out.
Yes, we have a question here. How does a board identify its key priorities when the first superintendent? The characteristics?
What the board will do is they'll take the information from these community town halls. They have their own ideas that they gave us in the interviews. They'll also get input from these community town halls and turn that into a profile. We'll do some editing and narrating and whatnot and give it to the board. But then they'll look at it, they'll finesse it somewhat to their liking. And then they'll just use that profile. And I have a fourth question about some characteristics coming in a little bit that they'll use, turn it into an advertisement for the position. Because we'll respond and apply based on that information. And the final question is, what are some characteristics you feel the superintendent should have to be successful here? What's the characteristics, the traits, experiences? Do you want someone who's a best superintendent? Are you open to someone who's just, who's from the private sector? Military? What are your thoughts about characteristics and experiences you have? And this is for the meeting. Ready this, Mr. Piddin?
Greetings. David Warne, Haley Falls, Deep, Parent Text, Parent Alumni. So I'm going to start out with some foundation. My grandfather, my mother's father is Italian. So he's, this is a white gentleman. My daughter's mother is Hispanic. She's a Panamanian. So I'm saying that to say, when I first came to A-leaf, Highway six was a two-lane road going north and south. Oil fields on each side of cows. I was one of three African-American families here, predominantly white when I first came here. So I'm saying that to say now, A-leaf Falls Deep has about one percent white. Right? We've got a hundred thousand voters, only ten percent vote. We're eighty-five percent socially economically disadvantaged. A-leaf does a great job of catering to the fifteen percent who generally are white, have money, but generally don't have kids in our, in our school system. The A-leaf Falls Superintendent Chamber will go to their, to their neighborhood association meetings, get the support that they need. I'm saying all that to say that we need a superintendent that's just as interested in catering to the eighty-five percent as they do the fifteen percent. Talk a lot about the nice buildings, nice buildings to grow. But when you got thirty-three percent, social, I mean, thirty-three percent in IR and eighty-five percent of your kids can't read at a third grade level, the buildings don't mean anything to us. It's almost as if we're trying to go back to the old ways that we were and not addressing the ways that we are now. You get extra money off the eighty-five percent socially economically disadvantaged, but you don't, you don't use that money to educate our kids. I'd like to see more technology put into special education. They get, again, they get more money for special education, but they don't put into special education. There's no reason why every single special ed class should have technology, smart boards, et cetera, et cetera, because we receive more money for them. So I would personally like to see a superintendent that caters to all one hundred percent, the fifteen percent, and the eighty-five percent, not just the fifteen percent. Because the eighty-five percent is carrying the district financial burden. We're eighty-five percent top heavy, ninety percent of our salary. Ninety percent of the annual salary, I mean, annual budget is spent on salary. So you use it, the community, for the money, but then you're not accommodating them. So that's why I started off by thanking y'all for making the adjustment to having a Saturday meeting for our community. Because most of our community are working two or three jobs. They take the buses, so they can't get here in an hour. They can't take off work. If I had to take off work and come to this meeting, you know, choose to take off work and come to this meeting, I wouldn't do it. If I had to travel from the east side of the district, the district is fourteen square miles. It takes about an hour and a half, maybe, maybe more, two or three buses to get from the administration building here, and that's only four miles. So we got to start catering to the individuals whom we're receiving the money for, whom we're supposed to be educating and representing, the total populace. Thank you.
Excellent points. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Other characteristics? All four questions still open. All four questions are there.
The guy with all the statistics made a lot of good points. I don't know much about the budget at A-leaf, but I work in one of the schools. It does seem like a lot of money is not spent in the best place. Still a lot of paper. There's, you know, things that are done for the teachers. They're giving these, some plastic case with some childhood thing. I don't know, things like useless gifts and books and stuff to give. This bag of books had a thirty-five dollar price tag on the back. When I got it, there was a stack of thousands of them. And I don't know a single teacher who picked one of those books. We have tons of resources available to us on school hygiene through our interface. We have a lot of these resources. There's so many different online internet resources. Gale is sort of usually used in universities. It's some kind of cited resource or something like that. There's all these games and things, and almost nobody uses them. We pay these subscriptions to these things. I'm not sure what they cost, but they can't be cheap. And really, nobody uses them. Nobody knows how to use them. We all just got these new smart boards. Especially teachers who've been in the game for a long time and don't take advantage of COVID. They're jaded. They're, they don't like change. All the technology frustrates them. They're not using it. It's a wasted money. Now, I don't say it's a waste of money. We need it, and I think we should use it. But these teachers will not because they don't like change. They've been doing this for too long. We need younger, fresher teachers, and I get retention is a problem. You said something about that people don't come to the money and they don't stay their culture. That is very much like the personal mentality. You need shoulder money. You know, the reason I did A-leaf was because at the time, we had the highest salary and it wasn't that great, and I needed the support of people. Already, I'm thinking about job leadership because there's other offers out there. And I need money. I don't need your culture. I would like some more support. As a first year teacher, there was, it seemed like I, they gave me a high degree for a year. So I understand that's a harder time. Everyone's short handed anyways. I don't really blame the people that are there. People that are there are working hard. The culture is fine. Culture's not going to get too bad. The older teachers though do need to retire, but they can't retire, you can't retire them until you get newer teachers in. No money's, there's no money coming down the pipe. Kids aren't majoring in education. There's some other points you guys brought up that I wanted to talk to. Oh, yeah, the superintendent. You asked what kind of characteristics, and you floated military. Some people might think that the culture, order, and discipline in the military might translate to education. I really hope none of you think that that's a terrible idea. I don't want anyone with a military background. We need less strictness, we need less of this law and order kind of teachers that just go in there and lay down the law and yell at kids and rant on them all day. We need a little kindness. Our kids are not coming to class. A lot of them hate their teachers. They're coming to class stoned all day. They need people to talk to and to respect them. Teachers need to earn their respect every semester. How are these teachers? They just expect it, and when they don't get it, they lash out. I hope the next superintendent will push a culture of encouragement, positivity, compassion, and understanding. Because these kids, a lot of them, their own lives. You don't know what's going on, but I mean, I know enough. And a lot of them are in a situation where they need a shoulder, ear, and a helping hand. And bitching and moaning acting is not doing that for them. Special education needs a lot more resources. The DC class at A-leaf has one teacher. There were two paraprofessionals. It's two classrooms. Supposed to be two teachers and more paraprofessionals, the life skills. And the paraprofessionals are terribly underpaid and overworked. Those guys do just as much work as the teachers, if not more. And they're the ones, the special education classes are tough. Eighteen plus is tough. DC class, life skills. They're like the least appreciated, the least paid teachers and paraprofessionals. You guys need to come out with the money. New superintendent is go up to legislature and get more funding. That's all I can give you for that.
And I know there's an online survey available. I create an awesome, awesome. One, the phrase we use is fiscal responsibility. But that's going to take a lot of conversation, put the meat on the bone, and what we mean by fiscal responsibility. So that's good feedback. Thank you. I appreciate that. Other characteristics?
We have one. So someone on one of the attendees virtually said, "An advocate for building a bridge between school and community, an advocate for teaching, well-rounded education that includes academics and everyday life skills."
Say amen to that. Great feedback, great feedback. Anything else? Characteristic wise? Any other status or hopes and aspirations? What are the celebrations, what are the challenges? If not, we'll, we'll, we'll video this. We'll have the feedback. Now, this will be brought together on the twenty-third for their consideration of the profile. As well as what's going to happen Thursday at noon here and Saturday at one o'clock on Cook Road. All right.
And I do want to mention one thing. The meeting between JG and the board is August thirtieth during the board meeting. So the board meeting is August thirtieth at six-thirty at the cabinet building in the boardroom. And that's when JG will present the information.
Just remembering something about school security. Everyone's scared of the schools. We have cops on campus, we have some hall monitors. I know people talk about, I know people talk about armed teachers. I don't want a gun. And the teachers that do want guns, I don't want to have guns. The cop presence at the school is fine enough. I don't like that some of them wear the blue line mask openly. I think it's confrontational, especially in a minority school. And I think it'd be prudent, but kind of scary to think. I mean, we need some more protection. Locking the doors in these little rules we do. It's not enough. Something defensive they can purchase that it would be helpful. Those large SWAT body blast shields. I don't really want to have that hanging around my classroom at the same time when someone with an AK is just going to blow off the door or the window. I want some bulletproof giant thing to rush away. So I think if you had a bunch of those shields in classes available for everybody, that's, you know, we could work together and do something if something terrible were ever happening.
And also, anything more, Sis?
Thank you for your feedback. This is the most important job that your school board has in front of them. And so the characteristics. I heard about making sure that we listen to the entire community. Make sure we take care of our teachers. And someone who can execute on some things that are like was mentioned with a lot of technology and then making sure that people are actually utilizing these tools would be something that would be desired. I thank you for taking the time this evening. We will continue to have a couple of more of these. But at some point, the board needs to get going and we need to get some direction on who we need to try to recruit. And then of course invite anybody to apply. So that being said, Alton, I'll let you close it out.
Again, just thank y'all for coming out. For coming, Alton, sir, please.
Greetings. David Warne, Haley Falls, Deep, Parent Text, Parent Alumni. I personally want a superintendent that's going to come in. They're going to, the board and the superintendent is going to throw around the word equity a lot. And after hearing this word used for the last several years, I want someone that's going to come in and define what equity is. Because so far, the leadership's definition of equity and what I think is supposed to look like, getting lined up. So I'd like somebody to come in and define what equity means to them because clearly it means something different to me. And then give me some examples that I should be able to see of your word equity in progress. Because I'm not seeing that. Again, my ideals of equity is not lining up with what I'm hearing and seeing. So I'd like to know what their definition of equity is and what is that supposed to look like when I do see it. Thank you.
Excellent point. We throw a lot of terms out there in education. But we never talk about what we mean by it. So we need to define it, and also discuss what would be example evidence that we've accomplished. That's all part of what we need to look at. All right. I guess we're done here. Thank you all very kindly. Appreciate it. Remember Thursday at noon here, Saturday at one PM on Cook Road, New Jersey School. Thank you all so much. Coming again.